Called order, City of Edgerton, regular common council meeting. 12 Albion Street, Monday, March 6, 2017, at 7:07 PM. Roll call.
Frye?
Here.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Here.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Two, pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, confirmation of appropriate meeting notice.
Meeting was noticed on Friday, March 3. Agenda is posted at the Post Office Library in City Hall.
For council acceptance of agenda.
Motion to accept agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. Motion passes. Five, personal appearances for non-agenda items limited to three minutes. Public will be allowed to speak on agenda items during the meeting. Tony, you all right?
Is this about the sidewalk?
If you want to.
Yes. I'd like to talk about the new sidewalk deal coming through.
All right.
Anyway, I was given the impression that you have to replace your sidewalk. You can't grind it down. Is that the truth?
We can't really discuss this here, but am I allowed to answer questions?
Just for explanation, sure. Yes, you can answer that, just not get it, don't get into a debate.
Well, I would just like to show you a picture of my sidewalk.
Mark, excuse me, can we get names and addresses, please?
Yes.
My name is Gary Berry, 711 Washington Street, Edgerton, Wisconsin. Anyway, I'll start with this right here. As you can see, my sidewalk is perfectly in good shape, other than it might be a half an inch up on each corner.
All right.
They want me to replace that. Well, I can come in there with a grinder and grind that, so it is not a trip hazard. I mean, if you look at the sidewalk, it is in good shape.
I just, policy question to answer the question that was asked, is the Public Works Committee, as part of the city's contract for sidewalk replacement and refurbishing, did not include saw cutting as an option for a treatment to reduce these trip hazards? So I guess your question, if I'm not mistaken, is would you be able to get a permit to do it yourself? Is that your question?
Right.
And that's a question really that the, I think the, as Tom and I have talked about, it'll be up to the Public Works Director's whether or not he issues those permits. So that hasn't been a practice that we have in the past had people request to do, correct?
Correct.
So I think that will be the question. So you're, we can connect you with Tom Hartzell, and you can have that conversation as to whether or not we would allow you to cut a public sidewalk, which I think, is that correct, is your question?
Well, yes.
And the current policy is, in effect, was decided upon in the Public Works, at the Public Works Committee level.
Okay.
And so it ends there.
But the question is, is, as you can see, this sidewalk is in great shape, other than up a half an inch on both corners, which it is a trip hazard. But if you can come in very cheaply and grind that down, I don't know if you call it saw, whatever, I call it grinding down, because it's with a grinder, basically, and make it so it's not a trip hazard, I mean, you're saving the taxpayers money.
I think your question will have to be with Tom Hartzell.
I'll show them.
Yeah.
Well, I think what we're going to need to do, right now, there's no policy in place for permitting that, so we're going to have to put that on a, possibly another DPW committee agenda to discuss permitting people privately hiring out to grind their sidewalk.
Do we need to make a motion to do so?
No.
No, I think it's just a matter of...
That's going to have to be brought forward at a later date.
...explaining that it has to go on a future agenda, right, for the DPW first, for the Public Works.
Could you please state your name and address?
Yes, my name is Sarah Dale. I live at 307 Second Street. I have the same situation. My sidewalk is perfect. It's not even a half an inch, because I went out there, because I couldn't figure out where the pink faded, extremely lines were. And I went out then with my ruler, and I measured it. It's maybe a fourth inch. It's between a fourth and a half inch. My sidewalk, well, I don't have my picture anymore, but my sidewalk, the size that is totally perfect. I walk my dogs. I walk all over this town. I walk to, I work at that high school. I walk up to school. I walk on some of these sidewalks that they're crap, but there's no pink marks, but there's one, there's sidewalks, parts of sidewalks that are even higher than mine, that do not have pink marks on them. So I, I would think that those would need more pink marks than mine, that's like a fourth of an inch, that I can understand. I work with people who, I mean, I worked at high school, I work with high school students. I'm a teacher up there. So I understand that ADA and after, and all the laws, but a cracked sidewalk, I think, is more important, and especially some of those, as you're walking up Albion, the streets are more important than a quarter of an inch sidewalk. I even walk by their house.
Maybe to assist everyone who may be here to talk about sidewalks, is, if you have a question about your specific marking, then you should call City Hall, because there will be a public hearing as a part of any special assessment process. You'll all be notified, there'll be a hearing, but we can't this evening help you with your individual circumstance, because we can't see it. But if you call, we will, when I, or I could just call, I won't take your number in front of everybody, and then we can, then we've been doing this since things were marked. So please, let us know. We'll come out and relook at it before we go to, go any further. So that would be advice to anyone here. If you contest that your sidewalk is in compliance, you should call us.
I just have a quick question. I'm Gary Berry, 711 Washington Street. My concern about the public hearing was, we don't know when that is, but the paperwork that we got, we were supposed to send things in by April 23rd.
The public hearing will be before that. And the bids will be available before that, too. So you'll have a lot more information.
Okay.
We're bidding now.
I'm here for example, just in purpose, Dan with 421st Street. I just think it should be an option, rather than just replacing everybody's, it should just be an inexpensive option to grind that down, it's not that high. We ordered replacements like six years ago. They took it out of our taxes and we did that, and now we're doing it again. But it could be an easy fix, instead of replacing a whole piece of concrete. Well, what's the estimate on how much we found, on this sidewalk? Anybody know?
It's like eighty dollars?
That would be something to consider before you have half the town replaced. Like, our neighbor probably has seven of them, they have eight. That's a lot of money.
And again, this is all really the subject of upcoming public hearing, which we should have the notice to the public, so everyone can participate, but if anyone...
No date of that public hearing right now?
Pardon me?
No date of that now?
Not exa, we think it's April 17, but we can't, you'll know when you get the letter, but we think that's on most schedules. Okay?
But there is talk about bringing it back to a committee to maybe look at that again.
Right, it's an option.
No.
I mentioned it just earlier.
At El Drive, they probably done, like, ten of them, because I'm sure the senior citizens, the wheelchairs have to walk through there, and they're ground down all over.
Just to clarify the statement, to make sure that we're clear, Alderperson McIntyre just said it will be coming back to a committee, but the, what is, what may come back to a committee is if a resident would be allowed to grind a sidewalk. There's been nothing about the city...
Well, I don't necessarily want to grind it myself, I just get a, I mean, I could make contact with them.
And when I, I'm sorry, I should be, I'm unclear. That's what I meant, is for you directly to hire your own contractor, as opposed to it being in a city contract. So that's what I'm trying to clarify, the distinction between those two.
And again, the current policy was just re-discussed at a recent Public Works Committee meeting, and it was decided upon, again, to continue forward with this policy as it was. So, I mean, if there's people, issues with this, they should have been addressed at that committee level, to those people making those decisions at that time. So that's where people should have been to discuss the issues.
We just got the letter, it's that long.
Yeah, we did, and we was like, we...
Yeah.
We never know, every meeting.
Yeah, so...
I have a question. How many people are on, John Dale, State Department, I was before, how many people are on the Public Works Committee? Three? That's it?
Correct. Mm-hmm. Three Alder, three elected officials here, are, make up the committees.
There's only three on finance. It's not like it's a huge, yeah.
They're all subcommittees of the City Council, ultimately answering the City Council, so that's normal.
It's normal.
This is the first time I've...
No, it's a good question. It's a very good question.
I mean, I agree with, I know where it'd be asked, because...
All right. Go ahead.
Sean Conklin, 311 Edgerton Street. Where is all the construction for sidewalks happening? Is it all over town, or is it just a select area?
The first year is a portion of the city, though we expect that it'll be a three-year project, probably like it was the last time. So it's generally the downtown and north of the downtown, in general.
Okay. What was my first question? Second question is, was going on to the whole grinding thing. I walked here from my house, three and a half blocks. In front of the church, right here, there's ground spots. In front of other homes, there are ground down spots. The issue that lies in there is how did they give permits to grind down local locations that we can't do now? Or did they do it off the books? And if we do the same thing, we're going to be then slapped fines, or things like that?
I can't answer any of those questions.
We can't, we actually ain't allowed to answer that, so...
We can look and see if there's permits. If you have an address, we can tell you by public record if there's a permit for something, if that's who your question is, but we don't know that tonight.
I haven't, though, pulled those addresses and pulled those permits and everything?
That's public record, absolutely.
I will be doing that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
21 Albion, up the street. And what, has there already been some notice of what this is likely to cost per square, or will it be, whatever it is, the 17th of April, that we'll get some idea on what individual cost might be?
Our goal would be the letters that go out to announce, the public hearing will include an estimated cost.
Okay, and that's likely to be, I'm not, I'm not in the country a lot, so I just would like to get that information before I go to Europe.
It's likely to be early April those letters would go out.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify one thing here. I'm kind of, I think I'm putting the pieces of the puzzle together here. The letters, if I understand it right, that you received are letters indicating that your sidewalk needs repair. Those letters are not indicating the discussion that took place at the DPW meeting discussing changing a policy with the sidewalks.
Right, repair is kind of a vague term.
Correct. So that, the intent of that letter was not to notify you of the change of the policy. That was one of those things that you need to be vigilant of through notifications of meetings. I mean, that's kind of your responsibility to take notice of that. So therefore, it's impossible for the city to send out everybody in the city a letter saying that we're going to have a meeting discussing changing sidewalk policies.
We post our agendas online.
All agendas, they're posted.
All the letter lines are...
We don't know in advance what we're going to...
Right, yeah.
I thought I read in the paper that it was told about, that it was going to be replaced, rather than the paper. Did I read that in the paper? I had one of, in one of the...
Yeah, I was reporting on the outcome of that, the policy decision at that meeting level, is what you were reading, I'm assuming, so. Any further discussion then on this topic?
It's just, again, just...
I'm checking something about 112 Edgerton Street. I'm new in town. When did you decide to have this sidewalk situation thing going on? I mean, you said there was change in the sidewalk situation. When was that taking place, and what was discussed?
They discussed changing the policy as to whether or not they would replace the sidewalk or grind it. And it was decided upon that they would continue with the current policy, or past policy, to just replace them. And again, that was done at a committee level, so...
And how many people are on the committee? Three?
Three.
And is not standard policy to send people a letter to let them know that this type of discussion is going to happen about all over town?
There, all agendas for every committee member are published, both on our website and in the paper, and the topic is there. So you would have had an opportunity to be informed that the topic of discussing sidewalk repair was, I'm not sure what it was titled, but that was there. That would have been your notice. No, we don't send out individual letters.
Are there any citizens here for that?
I don't know, I'm not on that committee.
Oh, I don't remember.
She'll be speaking.
Debbie Olson, 711 Washington Street, and I also received another, from a lot of the years, I was here, and I recommend that, I think that we should have the option of saw cutting the sidewalks, and that should be up to the property owner. It's a lot more inexpensive. It's a lot, it is very, it's good for the environment, takes a lot more time, uh, less, excuse me, takes a lot less time. And I believe that this matter should be brought to the full council for a vote, and not just with the community.
I'll send it back.
Thank you.
There's one more question. We mentioned three people. Which of you are on that committee?
And it had been discussed twice, so there had been another member at that point that isn't among this group here now.
All right. All right.
Just to be clear, then, the people that have received letters indicating their sidewalks need repair will also be receiving, or needs to be fixed, or whatever, also will be receiving the, a notice of a public hearing, correct?
Correct.
For the special assessment.
Good.
The, the public hearing will state how much it's going to cost if you don't do it before the public hearing. And that's what that letter's about.
Excuse me, Debbie Olson, does the public hearing also give us the right to choose between which method we have to do? I believe that there should be a choice by the property owner, because this is a very expensive endeavor.
Right, but again, it's in the city policy as to what method can be used.
Okay, I believe that, and again, I believe that this should be brought to the full council for a decision.
All right, moving on. Six minutes. Consider approval February 20 of 2017, meeting minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on that?
Who is the second?
Davis and Davis. Trying to make it easy.
DMP, yeah.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose. That motion passes. Seven, committee reports. Finance. That would be me. Motion to approve bills and payroll, amount of $198,408.85.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
That motion passes.
I think, if I can, just because I'm hearing conversation, the council cannot make any decisions or motions unless it's on an agenda. So I know you're upset that nothing's being changed or said, but they're not able to. As the city clerk, I have to make sure they abide by the...
So is the sidewalk situation all done now?
I want to ask Bill a question on this.
Are we all done talking about the sidewalk?
Wait a minute, you're just...
What, the clerk treasurer is absolutely correct. What occurred a moment ago was simply an opportunity for the public to be heard on issues that are not on the agenda. The sidewalk issue is not on the agenda, and therefore, council cannot act on the agenda item this evening, or act on sidewalks this evening.
We cannot make decisions on something that was not publicly noticed, because that would not be fair to the public. See, these notices are put out to make everybody here aware of the situation, like you were with the sidewalk situation. So we can't sit here now and discuss it and make decisions on it, because it wasn't posted publicly.
I have a question, though, to attorney. Under Alderperson's report, could someone make a recommendation to relook at this issue again? You can make a motion to have something put on an agenda at a future meeting. You cannot discuss it, you would not be able to weigh the merits, you could simply make a motion to be heard at a later date, if you were not otherwise going to be on the agenda. Again, the first way to get on an agenda is contact the chairperson and say, I'd like this item to be on an agenda routinely that is done, to look at this issue again.
Is that something we should do tonight?
You, you don't get to make, I'm sorry.
These people can. These people can get something on an agenda. You can't get, put something on an agenda.
I don't have a respect for the answer, but I just, just sort of think about this a little more, because how people are going to be concerned, because while it's...
I think that's where the public hearing, you need to go to the public hearing and have those conversations, correct?
That would be an opportunity, absolutely.
Or possibly, it might be in the council agenda, again, to research that issue specifically.
I wouldn't, I would not, I would not lead with false hope, all I'm saying. I would say, your, now is your opportunity to go to the, the Public Works Committee and have those discussions, or talk to somebody on the Public Works, or talk to an older person to get it on an agenda for a Public Works. That's the first step.
Now, now is not the time.
Right.
As, as the chairman made note, the public at large would not have an opportunity to weigh in and express their concerns. They may very well believe that the policy is the correct one, and they have no idea that this discussion's going on. So I think at this point, I'd encourage everyone to drop this discussion and move on with the items that are on the agenda at this point.
Understand.
We've had our public appearances.
Just one more question, as the public hearing, is that, that too late to discuss the ongoing, because the bids are already set up?
I would suggest you call the city administrator, Ramona Flanagan, and ask her what that process is, because if you have concerns, talk to the administrator about what are the options to get what on what agenda, because it is very confusing. And where can you, as the public, voice any questions or concerns? So if you go to...
We're done with this. We have a motion in a second on a different line item, so we're going to move on. So, did we have all the, all the, did we do roll call yet on that last one?
We've, we're, we've moved on to the bills and payroll, and yes, it has been voted on, 6-0 roll call vote.
Okay, so that motion passes. Two, consider approval licenses. There are no licenses tonight. Three, consider approval of contract with Cedar Corp for CDBG PF grant survey. If we can get background there more.
Yes, this is a, services with the city engineer's office to conduct a survey that is required for a grant application, we think would be advantageous for us to make for a public facilities grant, and the survey is a required component of it. Having the city engineer's office do it provides some anonymity, given that the survey is an income survey, and that is something that we've determined in the past to be advantageous to not have that come to City Hall, if they have a third-party administrator. It's for 21, $2,150.
I'll make, Mark, do you want to go first?
Okay, I'll make a motion...
I will second.
To approve.
Trying to think of lost time.
Okay, motion is second to approve the CB, CDBG PF grant. Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
That motion passes. Four, consider declaring public works equipment as surplus.
With noted changes.
What's that?
With noted changes.
Yes, correct. If the noted changes, I'm going to yell on more.
I'll second.
Was there a motion?
Mark.
Yeah, I'm making a motion, I'm sorry. So there's a motion in a second with changes. Any discussion? Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
That motion passes. By motion, motion to purchase, oh, we tabled that, so we're going to...
No. There was a motion for the...
No, was there?
It was a motion to go with the state contract, and then if that didn't pan out, then we're going to go with the not to exceed, I believe, was the motion?
Yes.
Yes, the, yes. Could you read that, Cindy, just so we got that clarified here?
The Finance Committee made a motion to purchase the police department TASER and equipment, first from the state contract, or the state, what is it called?
State contract.
State contract, or second, from TASER, in an amount not to exceed $1,650.76.
All right, so that will be my motion.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
And that motion passes. Six, motion to purchase the DPW cement breaker to be used on the skid steer...
Second.
From Janesville Bobcat, $9,100. Any discussion? Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
That motion passes. Motion to purchase ADPW out behind plate compactor from Bobcat at Janesville, in the amount of $1,750.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Who is the second?
Matt.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Walnuts?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
That motion passes. Plan Commission.
Plan Commission, Matt, and I'd like to make a motion to approve an extraterritorial land division for Dane County Growers Partnership at 481 Edgerton Road, in sections 27 and 28 of the town of Albion, number 9957.
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Mark Walnuts? Mark Wellnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve an extraterritorial land division for Pichota, I hope I pronounced that correctly, at 9223 North Arrowhead Shores in section 16 of the town of Fulton.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes. Motion passes.
And motion to approve an extraterritorial land division for Anderson at North Rock River Road in section 15 of the town of Fulton.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Candy Davis?
Yes.
McIntyre?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Wellnuts?
Yes.
Paul Davis?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
That motion passes. Parks Committee.
I'll keep the report very simple, as I had, forgot my notes. We had continued the discussion regarding the park signs in the community, and we explored the cost of building said signs. Happy report, I believe it was about, Ramona, correct me if I am wrong, but eighty dollars roughly per sign. That would cover installation, materials, and per sign. So it came out to a total of roughly-
I don't remember how many signs it were.
I remember, I remember it was around ten signs or so, so we're talking about a rough, a rough estimated cost of around $800, give or take a few signs. So that is exciting. And then we also discussed some new ideas for 2017. Some of the ideas that were brought forth by committee members included the lines showing interest in planting trees in the community. There had been talk of increased bike paths within the community, and further into that discussion, we will be looking at a si, or actually, a map prepared for us that will show existing paths and lanes in the community, and where we could find possible incremental additions to our existing plan, realizing that a large wholesale construction is not possible at this point, but following the, what Madison does, adding pieces here and there over the years will be a, a good policy. And then there was talk of putting in an isometric workout area along the Heine Road path. If you're not familiar with what that is, it's essentially using one's own body weight to do pull-ups, push-ups, chin-ups, those sort of things, exercises that would just further enhance the existing park as we see it. So that was parks in a nutshell.
All right, thank you. Moving on to public safety.
Yeah, we met at 5:45, and one of the items on the agenda here, but the first one was to consider the county rescue task force standard operating guidance, and we're gonna have the chief look into that a little bit more, and come back to the committee. And the next item on the agenda was to consider support of the countywide rescue task force operating guidance. And Tom was just looking, he looked at finance also, he's just gonna continue getting more information to the council. And public safety first, onto the council.
All right. All right, and then Public Works was not on the agenda, is there any discussion you'd like to have, Paul, without making any decisions?
Wasn't on the agenda.
Correct.
Not on the agenda.
But, right, I'm just saying if there's discussion on it, right? A report.
A quick report on parks. We already, we already went through and approved the purchases of the breaker and the plate compactor, as you saw. There was discussion about taking bids on X-Mark brand mowers versus opening it up to other local businesses who offer different brands. There was a motion on that. And for the future, we will be discussing and considering that no parking at Spencer Street near East Fulton Street. There will be a notice sent to residents, and it was tabled for future discussion.
All right, thank you. Eight, considered adoption of City of Edgerton Resolution 7-17, authorization to submit an application to the Department of Natural Resources, WAM, contract or services award for the Lawton Street property.
I'll second.
That was not a motion.
I'll make that as a motion, Mark, as read.
I'll second.